I just made it up in my head.
Good evening. Welcome to regular meeting of the city council and needles Public Utility Authority, subsidiary agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of needles. Tonight is Tuesday, December fourteenth, the meeting is called order at whatever time six something.
It's five oh eight.
Five oh eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, five oh eight. The mayor, okay, mayor and city council members may be attending this meeting via Microsoft Teams. The public may also attend via Teams. Call order, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yeah.
Merritt?
Yeah.
Pageant?
Here.
Belt?
Here.
Longacre?
Here.
Thank you.
Public comments pertaining to the aggressive session of any public comments pertaining to the executive session. See you in room.
Okay, we have an executive session. A conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Agency negotiator city manager Rick Daniels or his designated negotiating parties are John Ahia and Victoria Torres as a potential seller and city of needles as a potential buyer of the property described as a point one eight acre commercial property generally located directly on the southwest corner of Monterey Avenue and Goodwill Street at two thirteen Monterey Avenue, APN one eighty six dash two thirty five dash oh one. Under negotiations are the pricing terms. C conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Agency negotiator city manager Rick Daniels or his designated negotiating parties are city needles as a potential seller and Mohan Daria, the potential buyer of the property located at two twenty one Monterey Street, APN zero one eighty six dash two two three dash zero eight. Under negotiations of the pricing terms. C conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Agency negotiator city manager Rick Daniels or his designated negotiating parties of the city and needles as a potential seller and Joy and Charles Bennett as a potential buyer of the property described as point two zero acre vacant parcel generally located at the southeast corner of Clary Drive and Lasima Road, APN one eighty five dash three fifty one dash twenty four. Under negotiations are the pricing terms. Public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven. Title position, city clerk. And E conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. Agency designated representatives, city manager Rick Daniels, employee organizations, N U E A.
And on that, your honor, on item A and B, it's my understanding that councilmember Belt has a conflict of interest and is recusing herself from the closed session on item A and B, and she should state the reason why on the record.
I own property in that area.
All right, thank you. Welcome. Executive session report out of the session report by the city attorney.
Yes, the city council met an executive session, item A. Councilmember Tana Belt recused herself on that item because she is an owner of property in the vicinity of the property being discussed in closed session. That item was conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Agency negotiator city manager Rick Daniels or his designated negotiating parties John Maja and Victoria Torres as a potential seller and city of needles potential buyer of the property described as a point one eight acre commercial property generally located on the southwest corner of Monterey Avenue and Goodwill Street, two thirteen Monterey Avenue, and the APN numbers are provided in the agenda. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. Item B conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Agency negotiator city manager Rick Daniels or his designated negotiating parties are city of needles as a potential seller and Mohan Durai as a potential buyer of the property located at two twenty one Monterey Street. APN numbers provided in the agenda. And on that item, Ms. Belt recused herself for the same reason that she owns property in the vicinity of the item being discussed. There was no reportable action taken on item B. Item C conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Agency negotiator city manager Rick Daniels or designated negotiating parties are the city of needles as potential seller and Joyce and Charles Bennett as a potential buyer of the property described as point two acres of vacant parcel generally located at the southeast corner of Clary Drive and Lasima Road. APN number provided in the agenda, and there was no reportable action taken on that item. Item D public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven. Title of position, city clerk, no reportable action taken. Item E conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. Agency designated representative, city manager Rick Daniels, employee organizations, the N U E A. There was no reportable action taken. That concludes the report out from closed session.
Thank you, call order, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Merritt?
Here.
Pageant?
Here.
Belt?
Here.
Longacre?
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Wade Evans was called out for a training ram.
Do we have a?
I move to.
Motion.
Excuse me.
I'll second.
Okay, that motion by councilmember Campbell or second by councilmember Longacre, call for a vote.
Our voting lights are not working today, so we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
I also forgot to mention Jeff, so we'll include him in the same motion.
Do you concur?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes.
All right, please join with me standing for the invocation of me standing while the while the pledge of allegiance is delivered by Congress by councilmember Longacre. Our Father in heaven blesseth town and its citizens. Guide our council and city staff in their judgments and deliberations. And bless those who travel the desert highway to come to our crown jewel in the desert. In God's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Ready, begin.
I am the leader of the United States of America and the republic of which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the general. Yes.
Mayor, we have a, we're going to have a last of a form on items five. Which is the limitation on cannabis dispensaries. We're going to lack a forum for a temporary storage unit at the Barban's dispensary and then I can form for the visitor center. So I would request that the council continue those to the next meeting.
Move to continue.
That's five fifteen and sixteen.
Yes, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Well, motion.
Why does the visitor center?
May I ask some questions?
Pardon? We don't have a quorum.
We don't have a.
Those items.
What, can I ask why on the visitor center? We won't have a quorum, this is how we call this.
Right. Dr. Pageant.
We have.
But it is.
Oh.
You will have a quorum. Excuse me. Wade had asked that it be continued to where he can be.
Okay.
Well, if Wade has recused himself, why has he asked for a continuance?
Wade recused himself.
So there was.
Wade asked for an absence, right?
Yeah.
Asked for an absence, but he asked that it be continued.
He's recused himself from that issue in the last meeting.
Well, then I can withdraw the request to.
I do have a question. There was another councilmember who also said they had a conflict at the last meeting. I, was it you, Mayor Pageant?
Yes.
Okay, so the presiding officer.
I have a conflict.
So he has to leave, so one of us has.
So now we still don't have a quorum.
So there's.
So there's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
I sure spoke up.
Sorry, I didn't explain it.
So it is five fifteen to sixteen.
This is a time sensitive issue, so what are we doing with?
We have to wait till the next meeting because Doc has a conflict, so he has to leave the room. One of us has to sit in that chair that leaves three of us. And so we need Jeff. And we don't have a form, we don't have a form to vote.
I understand forums.
No, no. So the contract that we have with the chamber will expire on December thirty one. We will.
Vote.
Bring that back on January.
Eleven.
Eleven.
And John wants to speak. Yes, John?
Well, okay, I'm fine with what Rick said. I just wanted to make sure we didn't get in discussion on the item if, if councilmember Pageant's recusing himself.
I just want clarity.
So there was a motion made by Campbell, seconded by Belt. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Conflict of interest aside from myself and Tana's. Was there any other conflict of interest for the safety of one?
Your honor, I would have had two, but we just removed five and fifteen, so John, I'm good?
Good. If, okay, correspondence?
Yes, Senator, there we do have a correspondence from Mr. Michael Wright, who put a boarding commission application, I got it today for a planning commission vacancy. At this point in time, it's potential that we have three vacancies due to the fact that three of the current board members did not reapply to serve another four years.
Three of the four?
Three out of the, three out of the seven.
Of the.
Three of the three who expired this year have not reapplied.
On the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay, and we have one person who has submitted for the planning commission.
Correct.
Because we're dealing with two different commissions to it.
Okay.
All right.
Any other? That's it?
I would like to move that we accept Terry Campbell, Ed Brown, and Michael Wright for their.
We're not on that yet, please hold on a minute.
That's what I was asking.
Okay. Introductions, I don't see any former councilmen, are there any other introductions?
Hey, Pat.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Sean Goodison, former councilman, thank you. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else that I missed?
Campbell and Murch, I think.
Is that Campbell here?
Terry Campbell.
Is Tony here? Oh, I didn't see you back there. Councilman Terry Campbell here with us.
Linda Kidd in our second row right here.
Oh, okay, I couldn't see around here, I'm, I'm lying today, I'm sorry. My apologies.
And the back.
Hi, Pat.
Yes. They're all back there.
Needs a booster seat.
I think I better come down there and somebody else better come up here. All right, let's go. City attorney, are you going to address the parliamentary procedure?
Yes. So the council has adopted rules of procedure that apply to these proceedings, and I'll just touch on some of the key provisions. First, the mayor presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not been first recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. And the public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council.
Thank you. As a courtesy, sorry, public appearance. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects that are not on their schedule are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor or vice mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three minute time limit per person applies has been established by municipal code two dash eighteen. Amendment to California Government Code section five four nine five zero prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda.
Evening, council, Jared Johnson, thirteen twenty, sent up a circle. I'm not here in any official capacity, I'm going to work later. I wanted to address a couple of things. Some ladies are complaining about San Clemente. When you come around the curve off of ninety five, the first house there has a bunch of bushes that are pushing out past the sidewalk into the street. On that corner, we come around with big equipment, gas company, tow company, and they're forced to walk in the street on that curb. So they're asking that those bushes be trimmed back. They appear to be coming out that property there, so they just need to be trimmed back. Also, Mrs. Belt has been working with the state and has secured grants. One of the grants through Clean California is for cleaning up litter. And so we're doing a lot of litter removal. We're starting in town on our off ramps and on ramps that she's been working on. One of the things that's concerning me is people need to take aware that we're trying to clean up the town, and they need to give us some leniency, vehicles coming back and forth through. Also, when you come off Broadway from Arizona, the first thing you see is the brick wall behind the county building. It is covered in graffiti. When I come into this town, I don't know any better. I think there's a high crime rate or a lot of gang activity because that whole wall is just covered in graffiti.
Town.
I don't know if that is the property owner's responsibility. Is that a fifty fifty wall with the state or, I mean, with the city or BLM? But that looks really bad. We're going to be doing a lot of work here because the grant also covers a lot of restoration of our on ramps and off ramps. We're going to be doing vegetation work. The grant covers new rock, large advocate is going to be put along the off ramps. Has anybody been past cocktails going down the hill in Bullhead? And seen the rocks? The superintendent has informed me that's the kind of idea they're going with, with the two tone rocks. Yes, off ramps, on ramps, new vegetation, new rock beds. They're also talking about, she mentioned wrought iron stuff, so I'm not sure if that's the twirly things that ADOT has or in Vegas where they got the big birds and different things. So that's in the works right now. So the overtime for our guys will be on their days off. So on the weekend, if you see them out there, they're trying to clean up the town. Also, we got those projects going. Another thing that's been bugging me for a while is we are flooding the town with a specific industry. We're encouraging them to come here. We're telling weed that we want it here, that it's making a stay. I'm all for item number five that was taken off. I think it's well overdue, but at the same time, if you're going to over saturate town, and let's say one or two of these wants to be a good Samaritan in town and wants to come to the trunk or treats and wants to come to the Christmas things and wants to be part of the community, I find it's not fair for them to be able to be a face in the crowd. Nobody knows who they are or what they are. Other places can advertise and have stuff. I'm not saying they can advertise to sell because that's an ordinance against that. And I came before this council and started an ordinance and put signs up so they can't smoke in our parks, can't smoke anywhere where our kids are. But if they show up and they want to be a part of the community, I think their name should be able to be on a pop up or something. If Anheuser Busch was down there, and we had a bottling plant here, and they had just a tent that said Anheuser Busch with the eagle on it, that's not telling you to buy their product, that's not telling you what they do, that's not telling you anything about them. That's just saying, we're here in your community, we serve your community, and I believe a business that supports its community, the community will support that business. So if we want to have a pop up down there that doesn't indicate to smoke, doesn't advertise to buy our product, it's just their name saying, hey, we're in your community. Here we are, we're supporting your community, I hope you support us. I think their name should be allowed on some kind of pop up or something indicating who they are. It's not something that's going to advertise that we're the best or that what we do or what we sell. It's their name, we're here, supporting our community. I think that should be more than enough. You got the cable company down there, you got the Republic Services down there, you got a lot of other people down there. And as long as their decal or their name is not suggestive to what they do, it's just, hey, we're here, this is our name, we're doing the same thing everybody else is, we support our community. I feel that that is a fair thing to do. I know near the parks, there's an ordinance, they can't advertise what they do, but they advertise who they are and their part of this community. I think that's something that's only fair and should be allowed, thank you.
Thank you.
Question, you can ask. Can I ask him a question, your honor?
Yes. Yes, you may.
Something was brought to my attention about a week ago, and it has to do with the property on our side of the bridge of the river going from California to Arizona. So coming from Eric, coming from Arizona into California from Havasu, it would be on the left hand side of the freeway on the California side. So like the bridge, the PG and E side, that with weekend, holiday weekend traffic and RVs and ATVs and stuff going down there when people are leaving, that that section, which is California, is so trashed after they leave, kind of like the way, you know, we've kind of done away with the regatta for those reasons and. Is that something that your grant or what you're doing would be able to address that? Or who would we address with that?
You can address whether our immediate supervisor Jeff, or our superintendent who's over the whole area, who's just Joanna Lopez, and Tana has her number, been working with her on this grant stuff.
Thank you.
The plan is, it's been set up so far is start in town, make town better, work out ninety five, work out the forty, and start hitting out.
That's wonderful, thank you, thank you very much.
All right. All right, thank you. Next, Robert. All right.
Hello, I'm, hello, I'm Sailor Johnston, and I'm coming here for the parks. I was wondering if I could do anything to help it and do anything to help with the structural manage? So I can help build it and help build it and architect with me, so I can help her. And I'm here for smoking, because when I was at school one day, everybody was smoking around the gates. So that's really all I have to say. Owen, can you please vote yes on fourteen, because we really disagree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I figured nobody else would listen to me much, she was standing.
Barbara Beard, two thirteen Safari. I handed this out tonight with the understanding that this is, this has to do with the El Garcias and the chamber contract. And I only handed it out to city council members, so.
Patrick's not here, oh, there he is, I'm moving your table, don't tell anybody.
Don't tell Patrick. So I'm, I'm going to read it. And I asked the mayor if I go, I didn't tie myself on this because I didn't plan to read it, so I would ask for a few seconds because I'll read it as fast as I can.
All right.
Um, I spent some time a week ago on the chambers numerous attempts to find a way to put their toilet, as Rick identifies it, in and have a sewer outlet. I took a few pictures while I was there, including the several unnecessary concrete chopping holes damages that had been made. This came to me as complaints, people were asking me about what was going on. I tried to look in the city council, I mean, in the El Garcia's windows on the last council meeting, and I couldn't see anything, no damage, nothing, but I couldn't see very well either. I reviewed the contract documents that Rick provided me the last time it was on your agenda. I am not rendering any legal opinion, of course, that's Mr. Pinky's job, but it's very clear that since the contract is worded clearly, whether or not they are in breach is very clear. And I think everybody can figure that out for themselves. There are at least two contractual documents, one the council approved initially, and then there was a second document they approved next. I reviewed what I was provided, too. There may be a third, which may relate to how much funding they have. I requested on three or four occasions a copy of the certificate of insurance. They were supposed to have a certificate of insurance issued to cover any damages that they might cause to the El Garcias in the event they never did take occupancy but just did remodeling construction, like chopping up the floor. And I've been trying to get my hands on that certificate, and I still don't have it, and I haven't received. That's about, I think, three, at least three weeks ago, possibly four, that I started asking for it. If you see this, I think it's mentioned in the second paragraph, Mr. Pinky probably has this memorized. I believe it's, okay, I already said that the coverage was a hundred thousand, which is typical as a low amount in jungle construction projects that I've been familiar with. That pretty much wipes out that entire paragraph. There, oh, there is another certificate of insurance mentioned that came in the first paragraph, I mean, in the first contract, which is same similar amounts. I'm not sure because it was, you know, several weeks ago that I read both contracts. That's not in first, this has to do solely with remodel. Mr. Cropsey was there, Rick took me over to, I was hoping somebody else could take me over there, but we never did get together to make arrangements. So Rick was kind enough on one moment's notice to take me over there. There was a gentleman there I hadn't met before, Rick introduced us, and he was Mr. Cropsey. He wasn't doing anything when we got there, and he didn't do anything the entire time I was there with Rick. He, Mr. Daniels may have called Mr. Cropsey to be there when I got there, I'm not sure. It was my intention not to speak to anyone, I just wanted to see what had happened to the floor. And so I tried to keep Rick aside from Mr. Cropsey. I had no idea what Mr. Cropsey was doing there at the time. I think Rick subsequently told me he was supposed to be the city of the project manager. We toured the holes in the concrete, Rick identified where they all were, I took pictures. And then, I'm trying to cut some of this out if I can. I asked Rick why the holes were being chopped. I saw cut marks in addition to holes, cut marks in front of the El Garcia's, one angle, another angle, and another angle. Twenty feet or so over here is the existing ladies' room. So I was wondering why they were cutting all the way through to the front to the street instead of just joining up with that ladies' room? Rick didn't know, that's the response I got, Mr. Cropsey didn't know, those are the responses I got. Nobody knew why they weren't going that direction. That kind of is answered a little bit later, but I'm, I still wonder. Skip, page two. Rick told me that the chamber was paying Mr. Cropsey, that he was a licensed contractor. I asked what state, I don't think Rick knew if it was California, Arizona at the time, he wasn't sure. I checked later, and there was no current license in Arizona. There's one that's not, not active, it's gone inactive. It was ambiguous in California, but there were, there was at least one, possibly two other companies that sound like investment companies, but I think I found, I'm doing that part from memory. I found a B one contractor's license under one of those names. I think it was attached to Mr. Cropsey. Well, with B one, you could be a general contractor, but you have to have specific licenses for plumbing, maybe electrical, all the subcontractors. You can't render advice on the subcontracts or work in that area. I'm not too sure about specifics about contract law anymore, I used to be pretty good at it. Anyway, Mr. Daniels brought me back to talk to Alberto. Alberto was up on the screen earlier. Mr. Daniels drew a little sketch about where the cutting is going. He asked Alberto, Alberto said that he had gone over there, they went and got Si from the city. Si came over with a camera that, and Si went to the manhole in the street, in the sewer, and ran the camera all the way up as far as it could go, and then through the lighting they have on the camera and everything marked where these angle cuts had to go to get to the toilet they want to install. So we have time for Alberto and time for Si. And Mr. Daniels said they had not been built, the chamber had not been built for those bills yet. So I'm hoping that we'll have bills that are paid pretty soon, this got continued again, so maybe so. Skip, skip. Oh, Alberto said that they, whoever made the decision, I don't recall if I was told, to go this and top up the front of the building. they, whoever made the decision, I don't recall if I was told, to go this and top up the front of the building floor to get to the sewer, they made the decision based on the fact that the sewer from the other two bathrooms goes directly straight out, wherever it comes out. I don't know if it's further up, or if it angles over to the same sewer line or not. I don't know if that's a good enough answer or not, but at least I found an answer, okay? Now, I also discovered that when you're, when you're cutting through, they had already saw cut all the, all the direction, these angle cuts that are going out the front. The original El Garcia's flooring had been concreted over the very original first concrete flooring, or slab, or whatever was under there. So, when you're making the cuts now, the question is, are you also going through the original flooring that was? I'm hearing somebody saying no. So, somebody else can answer that question, I don't know. I'm concerned about the integrity of the building and the floor being all chopped up, and then how you repair that. Now, I was told they can put rebar through there, or do something else to make sure that floor is still strong. But we're talking about a special process that has to be applied in order to restore the floor to where it was, in all these different places. I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Next, policeman.
Hello, I'm Logan Knox, and I'm here to speak on the Duke Watkins Park project, as well as some additions for
Could you give me your address, please? Could you give me your address, please?
Twenty-four oh-two, with record, East Poverty Drive.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak on the Duke Watkins Park project, as well as some additions for the community that would benefit the younger generations. Currently, I own a GFAB Industries, a skate brand that sponsors four skaters, two being local, as well as two from Orange County, California. Within the last year, we've taken countless skate trips from Phoenix to San Diego, Orange and Huntington, to Malibu and Santa Barbara, being this upcoming weekend to be a part of the Solvayn California Skate Competition. I've been able to give these skaters an opportunity not many from a small town like we get, or like us get. We've experienced hundreds of well-built parks, as well as some not. One skater even entered in his first competition and placed fourteenth out of fifty to seventy-five others. With that being said, I'm here to propose a street section along J Street, and the dirt portion of the park that has already been fenced in. In a recent Zach News article, I'd seen plans for a nine, a three-point-nine million-dollar project for Duke Watkins Park that involved shade figures in the dirt along J Street. I'm hoping to be able, be able to have skater knowledge, as well as input, as is something us skaters believe is beneficial. The street section would include a series of flat bars, stair sets, and many obstacles close to representing a street spot you would find riding around town, which is pretty frowned upon here in town, as most businesses are prison, most businesses are privately owned. With the addition of the street section, I'd also like to shed light on a community-involved idea as well. A skate shop slash print shop that would offer both skate lessons, as well as printing and design lessons. Sometimes kids aren't gonna be interested in rec ball, or swim lessons, or anything that's offered, as long as, as well as Craig softball, or crack softball, offered right up the street. This would give those few not into ball sports another opportunity, as well as a place to be able to do what they may end up loving, as well as be great at. This also gives parents another opportunity to let their kids experience something that may very well end up liking, as we don't have much in the city to offer growing up. Maybe even parents can join in on learning to skate or print. Both could possibly be for all ages. For the skate shop side of things, we'd be one, if not the only skate shop from Bullhead to Havasu. This would be a place kids can come in and feel comfortable learning to ride, as well as some, setting up the skateboards. It also gives many current youngers the same opportunities, instead of coming here to drink and vandalize the park as it has been. I do also own Cowboy and Indian Services, a landscaping company, just across the river. And I would also be offering the upkeep of all of Duke Watkins Park. The print shop would also be visible within the skate shop and give the same opportunities of interest for kids really not into many sports. We would offer many opportunities to learn everything from designing, editing, all the way to screen printing, if they don't really like sports, such. Location and caution for said skate and print shop would be near Dollar General, connected to the northeast side of Duke Watkins Park. Minimal to no additional parking would be needed. The print shop also provides an in-city business to be able to print in the city, or to print for the City of Needles. Any clubs, and school, or simple small businesses. With the addition of both the street section and skate and print shop, as a community, we can host street league skate events, nationally known, nationally known, just as Havasu does with their skate park. On many skate trips, I've been lucky enough to meet and work with Yobords, Phoenix Skateboards, We the Greens, Decades Official, as well as Cowtown Skate Shop, to be involved in many competitions, as well as hosting. As well as being able to host competitions, that brings me to my next topic, the pump track. The pump track can instead be placed on the southeast side of the skate park, where the grass backs the current baseball field. The current backstop and dugouts could then be placed on the west side of the park, back to J Street and the basketball, the outside basketball courts, keeping all ball sports on specific sides. With that, within the idea of the pump track, brings light to the BMX track and weekly competition, just as Bullhead and Havasu offer. The skate shop would also provide the opportunity to sponsor said riders and locals in the BMX scene, as well as a place, and people to be behind them, supporting them in something they may learn to love, as well as be great at. These many ideas offer experiences and opportunities Needles has yet to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Wow, that was a pretty impressive. Hey, before you leave, make sure we get your phone number. Good friends with Tony Hawk and Greg Lutzka. Very, very bold on that. I just wanted to introduce myself. Darren Hagan, from Newport Beach, California. Behind the scenes, or let me tell you about myself a little bit, real quick. I was born and raised Riverside, California. Graduated high school from Woodcrest Christian, moved to Indianapolis at fifteen years old on my own. Become a race car driver, was a race car driver for eighteen years. Won seven national, seven national titles, two world titles. Moved home, retired, got into the bottling business. They zoned for cannabis. I then got into the cannabis business, thinking, really scared to call Great Clips and Ford and tell them I was a part of that, and, you know, it was a very different vibe. They were very open to it. I ended up getting into the cannabis industry. I now, a few years later, own eighteen different companies, cannabis and non-cannabis. Know the focus on the, I know some big issues on cannabis, and big issues on non-cannabis, that go side and side with each other. I drove in five hours for topic number five, so that's why. So, that's why I just wanted to, not a problem, I do have a little bit about me that I did print out just about fifteen minutes ago, for some reason. I don't know, God said, print it out, because they're not having that topic. I have been working on behind the scenes with Frankie on a project for cannabis hair. With knowing it's getting ready to close and stuff, our application will be in very soon. But I did want you to know that the public will need education and help, and skate parks put up, and different things. And we're willing to come into this town and help, and educate, and use our facility. We have colleges that come into us. So, cannabis on some sides, people view as bad. On other sides, just like I did at the beginning, on other sides, it does help with sleep, pain, recovery with the NFL. So, hopefully, I just really want to introduce myself, since it was a long drive. This is really cool to see. I'm part of a lot of cities, Los Angeles, Long Beach, Corona, Lake Elsinore, and not this many people show up. So, it's really cool to see, actually, the community showing up to your guys' stuff, and hopefully I could be a part of your town, and if I can drop this somewhere with. But thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Darren.
Do we have your information?
Hi, everybody. I rushed up here from Las Vegas, because my mom was getting eye surgery to come for number eleven. And through that nasty weather in Vegas, I guess it got tabled. So, can I just, I'd like to just say some things. I am not an owner of Marvin Mary Jakes. But I am here to represent the owners, and to, I am here as the face of Marvin Mary Jakes. Everything that I've done at the community park, the Christmas thing, the food, everything that I did, I did on my own. Nothing to do with Marvin Mary Jakes Dispensary. This was done by me, Cheryl Littlewell, because I made my name of who I was in the city, and I thought that I should give back to the city. And I gave back. I rented the park, I rented El Garcia's, I did everything that I was supposed to do. If anybody knows me, I'm used to doing, you know, two million dollars a month. One point seven five million is what we used to do at the healing center. I sold my business due to my mother got sick, and it was family-first in my eyes. When I sold the business, I shouldn't have. I shouldn't have, and I should have tried to get her health taken care of. And when I found out that my cancer patients and people that I stepped forward to help out, were getting helped out, and people trashed my name, I had to come back. And I knew that the City of Needles was losing business. And so, because I were losing business, and I heard through Facebook, of course, and through social media, how bad it was, I came back. I got you guys a buyer to buy one of the shops in the town, and I said, I'm gonna do it for fun, you don't even have to pay me. So, all the hours that I put in over there, I'm doing on my own. I don't need a dollar from the shop, I'm not asking for a dollar from the shop, I'm doing it to bring the business back. So, I just want to kind of give you some information. Before I got to the business, the business was doing a hundred thousand dollars a month. My first month, the business jumped up to three hundred thousand dollars. My second month, the business has jumped up to six hundred thousand dollars. By this month, we should be at eight hundred thousand dollars. Bringing the businesses and all the business back to the City of Needles. On top of that, me giving to the City of Needles, in the tri-state community. But I do have an issue. The issue is, you could call it, I'm a hoarder of weed. I, I purchase, and if there's a good deal, I cannot let it go, because if you don't have the amount of weed to sell, or cannabis to sell on that monthly basis, how can you sell it? I cannot wait for them to bring it down seven to fourteen to ten days. It doesn't work that way, you know? So, I, it's a little shop. It's a very little shop. We're trying to build out the shop into another area. It takes time, especially in California. So, that's my issue right now, is we don't have enough space to contain everything that we need, or have. So, I just want to make sure that you guys know this. I thought it was a timely manner, very important to us, or to the city, because if you don't have it, you can't make money. That's all I wanted to say. I got here just a little late.
It's nice to see you back, too.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Sylvia Milette, Department of Finance. I wanted to say thanks on behalf of the finance team, Kathy, Barbara, Tracy, and myself, for the employee appreciation event. We had a lot of fun. The food from Wagon Wheel was delicious, and we all loved our prizes. So, thank you very much.
I just wanted to say congratulations to Patrick.
Thank you. Alright, let's go ahead. Republican appearance, Mr. Cropsey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the city council, city manager Daniels. I did not plan on approaching the council this evening, except I do need to clarify a couple of things that were said about me and earlier. This is the first time since the mid-eighties that I've been in this council chamber. The last time I was here, I bought the property that's now known as fifteen oh-one and sixteen oh-one, Millie Hill. I bought that property as the owner, the licensed contractor, developer, and ultimate operator of eighty-four units up there. I've been licensed in two states, Arizona and California. I've never had my license threatened or pulled. However, I did deactivate my licenses when we went to Alaska in the early nineties. I worked in Alaska for twenty years, basically doing project management on school projects. I was the director of operations for the North Slope Borough School District. My budget was fourteen million, operating budget was fourteen million, and my average capital budget per year was seven million, sometimes as much as thirty million. Altogether, I built about, I was the project manager on about fifty million dollars worth of school projects for the North Slope Borough. I, a school district. Then I retired and went, just consulted for different school districts across the state. And again, I, I managed twenty-five or thirty million of school construction projects for, for different school districts. We came back to Needles, and I retired, and I'm still retired, and I'm, although I am being paid to manage the El Garcia's TI project, I'm getting ten dollars a month. And I was able to reduce the budget by fifty thousand, because that's what was budgeted for, for project management. So, I cut the budget by fifty thousand, less ten dollars a month for the next ten or eleven months, I guess. The lady that came up, and I don't know her name, anyway, she said that I was cutting, we were cutting the concrete, sort of helter-skelter. Number one, we did not go outside the building, so all the, all the concrete selling was done inside, and we were following the plan. The project manager never unilaterally takes a plan that's been approved, adopted, and, and signed off by the engineer as the construction drawings. Never, as the owner's rep, or any other person on the project, will take those drawings and just arbitrarily change them. It just doesn't happen. The project, the people that were involved in, every, are gonna be involved in, for the responsibility of every portion of that project, are licensed contractors. Phillips Construction was the, was the excavate, doing the excavating, and Mr. Fancher, the plumber, was doing the plumbing. She said I was standing around doing nothing, and frankly, when people are on the job, I probably will be standing around doing nothing. When I built the eighty-four units up here, I pretty much stood and did nothing also. Except that I had to make sure people got paid, and safety was being observed, and things like that. And again, I want to emphasize that this chopping up and stuff was done very systematically. It was saw cut, it was removed, the concrete was taken to a legal dump site. And again, I don't really want to try to sell the project, I just want to let you know that I, according to the item sixty, the first sentence says, "Extend the Chamber of Commerce agreement upon submission of a project plan prepared by a paid project manager who will assure the project completion." I have never left a project uncompleted, and though not a hundred million, but tens of millions of dollars. And I will tell you one more thing. I never brought a project in that ended up in litigation. I was always, I have always been a person who was a bridge builder, and when there was a, when there's a conflict between the owner, and I was a single point of contact, in my, in my single point of contact, in all of my contracts for the project. So, the city council, or the school board, would have the superintendent come to me if there was a problem, and the contractor did the same thing, because we have too much discussion among participants, and the project gets delayed and gets confused. And so, anyway, she, she asked me why I was building it, and I deny that I said, I don't know. I did say, I'm following the, I'm following the plans, and I can produce the plans anytime anybody would like to look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Parker, Needles Chamber, Bailey Avenue. I don't want to, sorry. I don't want to
I don't want to cause a distraction from the general topic of the buildout in the El Garcis and the project that is at hand. But I'm going to address a different subject. It's related, but it's a little different. I just wanted to give you a year-end update on the California Welcome Center and the status that it is right now is very great. I didn't get it after the fact. As of December right now, 2021, I've been in touch with this California Welcome Center continually since the project started and all the false starts and the beginnings and the ends and the disappointments. I'll just read from the document. "The California Welcome Center has officially requested that the Needles Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center update its application. Updating the application includes providing a graphic designer's rendering of the use of the interior spaces. This will involve photographing the spaces once the framing starts. It will produce a to-scale depiction of the furniture and functional elements within the functional space. As well, current data will replace some of the data in the previous RFP. February 15th of 2022, we will be able to begin submitting the documents for the reapplication. The operational plan has been approved. We had a site visit, and the application is still active. No additional fees will be levied. The original application fee remains in force. Though the California Welcome Center has been challenging to work with at times, the message to me has always been not of if, but when the project will happen. The CWC rep indicated to me in November that Needles is an automatic choice due to location and attractions, once it occupies the El Garcis location. And I do remain very optimistic. Their point of the visit and the location that we were in when they made the site visit was an absolute deal breaker. So it's inherently obvious that the occupancy of the El Garcis is a contingent process for the California Welcome Center." I just wanted to give you the update on that. February, we'll have more news. One other thing I wanted to remind everybody. Sorry, morning males, if you want to, but our night is the State of the City. And I want to have you know differently, wants to, from the audience. It will be at the Wagon Wheel at 5:00. Mayor, the city leadership administration will be there. He's going to report to the city about the state of the city. There'll be questions, questions, and input from anybody that wants to. Sponsored by the Chamber.
Thank you.
Any full of public appearance? Seeing none, item number one. Interviewers slash appointments to fill vacancies on various boards and commissions due to resident leave and/or slash expiration terms and continuing advertising. Staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Every couple of years, there are terms that expire on our boards and commissions. The Parks Recreation Commission, Planning Commission Utility Board, the Cemetery Advisory Board, and the Housing Committee. We, about a month ago, you directed the city clerk to advertise those vacancies. And on the utility board, there were, at the time, two terms that were expiring. And then a third one was created when Candace Martinez came to work for the city as Assistant City Clerk. So now we have three. Two of the seven members, six members of the board reapply to be appointed. And Terry Campbell and Ed Brown have reapply. They're here if you want to interview them or ask any questions. Second of all, on the Planning Commission, as of this morning, we had no applicants. But we received later today an application from Michael Rice, who is, had served with suspension on the utility board before. But as he told me, as hard as it is planning issues, not utilities. We have not received any request for Parks Recreation Commission. Yeah, we need some. And Cemetery Advisory Board. But what we will do, Dale and I working together, is we will advertise again for those vacancies. But in the meantime, you have two peoples whom applied for the three vacancies on the utility board, and you have one person who's applied for the three vacancies on the planning. While the utility board is preeminent, the Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday at noon. And we need someone appointed to the planning.
Everybody has their blood in their body.
Oh, now, this is a great opportunity to serve the city. Not that difficult, but it does consume time.
It's extremely difficult.
So I would encourage, so the council, if you want to interview, all three of the applicants are here. If you don't want to move right to appointment, get free to do this.
I move to appoint. If your blood is pumping through your heart and you're alive, we like you. They move to appoint all three prospective persons.
And thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Motion. Okay. Counsel, Councilwoman Campbell, and Councilwoman Merritt. Second, I would just like to take this chance to thank all three of the members for their service and for their continuing service to the city. That call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number two. Public hearing to consider all evidence and testimony for against approving the annual accounting and development impact fees for fiscal year 2021.
Staff report. The Council, Sylvia has substance, but this is an annual report that the city is requiring. I file, and I'll get out soon.
Yes, per AB 1600, requires that both general and charter cities account for every development impact fee and hold a public accounting, an accounting of those fees at a public meeting annually. So these balances shown here are for the North Needles impact fees and South Needles impact fees by category for the balances at the period ending June 30th, 2021. Also, part of this report shows the planned projects for fiscal year 22 for these fees that will be used. They'll be, they'll include an engineering traffic study out of the circulation category and a portion of the study to extend water lines into North Needles out of the water category. Are there any questions? Seeking approval of the annual fees report.
Okay, thank you, the motion.
Move to approve.
I second it.
Your motion by Councilmember Campbell, and second by Councilmember Merritt. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item three, public hearing, to consider all evidence and testimony for against amending Chapter 4 of the Animal Control Regarding Mandatory Spaying and Needing of Dogs and Cats has been continued to the staff meeting of January 11th. Item number four, public hearing, to consider all evidence and testimony for against amending Chapter 15A, recreational area use, that's quote recreational, recreational area use, unquote, prohibiting glass on city maces, beaches. Staff report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council, you had asked council-directed staff to develop an ordinance to prohibit littering and to prohibit glass containers on the beach. Littering's a no-brainer. But glass, we, and when we did a beach cleanup earlier this year, we had an inordinate amount of broken glass. So we would look to prohibit glass containers. We would probably need to add about five or six sites at First Beach, Second Beach, and Jack Smith Beach. And those are about 150 apiece. But in order to enforce, we need notification that you're not supposed to litter or have glass. So our recommendation is the council approve this, the draft orders. You will need four votes.
Councilmember Longacre?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I will second it. Excuse me, Your Honor, this is a public hearing, so we do have to open and close.
It's a public hearing, is there any comments for the public regarding this on? Seeing none, we have a motion by Councilmember Longacre, and second by Councilmember Campbell. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 15, item five is in poll. Reassess the city council meeting, convene a joint council slash NPUA meeting. Call for all calls previously been taken. Item number six, NPUA and council.
Your Honor?
Yes.
John, number six has to do with cultivation. Should I accuse myself?
No, it's a, it's a.
It's his cultivation site.
To energize a cultivation site. It's about the electric.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty attenuated from that. It's really just a.
I'm voting for power.
Yeah, it's really just a contract. It's with Petrelli Electric is really what it is. That just describes some of the things that they're working on. But I think it's attenuated from that.
Okay.
I do not think you have a conflict.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, approximately three or four months ago, or actually about the first of the year, the contract we had with a supplemental electric company to assist on overload of work expired. We put it out of bid. Council chose Petrelli Electric Company for a three-year contract. We use them for overload of work. So our electric crews are sized for the routine everyday workload. When we run into heavy workload, we bring in Petrelli. We are going to do three tasks. One is to energize the four cannabis cultivation facilities at Victory and Highway 95. And then in time, we will build a new substation in that area. Task two is pole replacements on J Street from Valvo and Parkway. We have, this is at every pole in town and rated it for stability and sturdiness. And this will replace a number of poles in that neighborhood. The task three is there's a buck pole changeout at Needles Christian Church. Now, a buck pole is a pole with one arm sticking in. So we're going to replace that. The total, and it, the improvements add to the system reliability of our electrical system. Our recommendation is to authorize the work on the 535,600 feet. I'd like to answer the question.
Question by the council? Any questions by the public? Seeing none, or any change in motion?
I move to approve tasks one, two, and three.
All right, I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Campbell, and second by Councilmember Longacre. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number seven, NPUA slash council, with emergency resolution number 2021. Staff report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. In July, we were reliant on one well. And that well went out due to an electrical storm. And the council declared an emergency. And in that emergency, you granted to the city manager variances to the purchasing policy. So what I'm here to do is to inform you that we, on the well bid, it started off at what we thought was going to be 1.9 million. It's now turned into a $5.2 million well project. And in part because of supply chain interruptions, but also, for example, piping from the wellhead to the system has tripled in cost. So we are advised by California Water Resources Department that they will cover those costs. They haven't given us the award letter, all of them. So they haven't given us the award letter yet. But they have given us an award letter of 1.9 million. So that is authorized to be spent. The second is, we received only one bid. But right now, as a result of the drought, there's a terrible shortage of well drillers in the state of California, in the Central Valley, and a lot of.
Get some shovels.
Right, so we were informed by the vendor that they needed some assurance that we were going to go with them. And that we talked it into a letter of intent, that it was our intent. But we, I won't sign the agreement until you award the bid. And we shouldn't do that until we get the written grant award. So, but I did sign the letter of intent. And I did sign the authorization for Phillips excavation to order the piping. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and to, there's no action needed, but I'd be glad to answer your question. When I, when I take these actions, I want the council to be informed.
I have a question, Your Honor. And it actually isn't with that. Can you give us a roundabout on how many grants we've been awarded this year?
I can't count them all. But I do know that it's approximately $15 million.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Infrastructure grants.
That's what I wanted.
I'll get in some of those a little bit later.
Fantastic.
And other monies, we don't, that are 100% grants, the rate payers don't have to pay them.
Exactly. Thank you.
I thank you for that information. We'll move on to item number eight, NPUA slash council, to authorize the city to execute the forbearance of those.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we receive our allocation of Colorado River water from the Bureau of Reclamation, the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. In that, we, and with our water rights, we are entitled to 1,272, 1,272 acre feet per year. And if we use less than that, that water is theoretically still in Lake Mead. In the Pala Bury Irrigation District, they are following hundreds of acres of farmland to conserve water. And the Bureau has asked all of the Colorado River partners to sign this forbearance agreement, which says that if we underuse, then we can't, five, 10 years from now, go back and sue VOR and try and get that underused water back. It's a use it or lose it system on an annual basis.
They usually lose it under a drought situation.
Well, I know, but that's what.
You're supposed to conserve it?
Yes, we're supposed to conserve. And as a result, it is a collective benefit of the conservation. The Tier One cutbacks because of the drought, Arizona's having to reduce their water supply significantly.
So if we got everyone in town to conserve water to where it made a difference, and we saved water, we lose it.
Well, now, it's collectively saved in Lake Mead for the benefit of all of the jurisdictions.
It's in the Bellagio Fountain, then. Gotcha.
Yeah. Our water attorneys have determined that this is part of the regulations of the river, law of the river. We've done this before, so it's merely a restatement of the forbearance.
Discussion by council?
Your honor?
Yes.
So this only means that if we happen to not use four cups of water, and it gets stored in Lake Mead, that just in five years or ten years, we're not going to say you owe us four cups of water. We still, we have perfected water rights here. We are very protected in Needles. We, we are not hurting for water. And we all should be conserving water, every one of us.
My trees are mad at me, I know.
Well, I ripped out, I got desert landscaping in front of my house, and I'm chipping myself, so it's okay. I've done it. So, you know, it's just something that, as for humanity, we all need to be doing it. And all of us need to conserve water. We all need to pool together, and those reservoirs were down to thirty-seven percent. So sixty, sixty-three percent of the water's gone. So we're trying to do something collectively with all the river cities is to put a little bit more water back into that reservoir, which will benefit all of us in the end. So that's all it is. So we just can't come back later on and say you owe us something. And we're all making that agreement, not just us.
All right, I think we all understand that. Are there any in motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Campbell, a second by councilmember Longacre. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Reassess the council, NPU meeting, and convene the Sarda meeting. Call for all the roll calls previously been taken. Public comments pertaining to council items, a three-minute time limit of approbation has been applied.
Good evening again.
I don't know. We have some public comments. Go ahead.
Sylvia Malletti, Finance Department.
No.
Health and Safety Code three, four, one, seven, seven. The successor agency, Sarda, is required to prepare a recognized obligation payment schedule for the twelve-month period coming up. That period covered is July twenty twenty-two to June of twenty twenty-three. Included in this ROPS that we're going over this evening are the outstanding debt and interest on the bonds, which is the final payment August the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two for the Sarda, legal fees and trustee fees. We're seeking approval this evening from you. It will be going to the countywide oversight board thereafter for approval on January the tenth. Once that approval is received, it goes to the California Department of Finance for final approval on February the first. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is probably our last one that we want to talk about. The agency.
It's gone.
We'll resolve it after that.
All right. Any public comments? Do you find you obtain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Longacre, and we have a second by councilmember Campbell. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pageant?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Reassess the Sarda meeting, weaken the city council meeting. The consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar considered to be routine will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit of approbation applies. Recommended action is approve items ten through thirteen on the consent calendar by an affirmative vote. Does anyone wish to pull any of the items? Seeing none, all in taking a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by councilmember Campbell, a second by councilmember Longacre. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
End of consent calendar, regular items number fourteen, except three million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred dollar grant from the California Department of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is with great pride that I bring to you a grant request that the city submitted after holding community workshops, soliciting people's preference about what would go on in parks with the city. And we submitted these two years ago. We made a special effort at a workshop with kids so they could identify what they want in the parks for them to do. So we have a generalized plan that we got notice of last week that will rehabilitate the basketball court at, at Duke Watkins. It will add a restroom. It will add shade structures and picnic tables. It will redo the field that's used for soccer and you, or flag football. It will add field lights to the, the athletic fields. It will add shade cover over the softball diamond that middle school uses. It will create a splice pad. So for those of you who don't know, a splice pad is a bunch of bubbling that happens from water for little kids to run through. But we're going to put it in the shape of Route sixty-six logo, so it'll show up on every air photo skate park. The skate park, we're going to finish off, but we are adding benches and shade structures for people using the skate parks. We are receiving funding for a new play, children's play structure with slides and plus swings and, and it's also covered swings and teeter totters. We're also adding an expression wall for people who want to hit on something to try and attract them to that rather than restrooms. We are doing a new road on Army Road between the dog park and the animal shelter and the rec center. We are expanding the dog park, create an area for smaller dogs. Part of the input was that smaller dogs get run over in the process. But also, we are receipt funding for what, what in recreation centers they call a pump. Now, to me, it's a BMX bike. So it is, you know, and, but this is a general schematic. What's that?
A pump track starts with a hill that drops in, and they go real fast, so the humps have to come back. That's what a pump track is.
Oh, you're more modern. But.
We're not going to get sued.
This is generalized. I provided my card to the gentleman spoke earlier today. We'll take his suggestions into account, and we'll work to get this done. Now, what this does is it not only makes improvements to the block. If you recall, we received a hundred and eighty-one thousand from the state for field lights of the Duke Watkins. This grant is going to cover that, so we want to reprogram that money. Second of all, we received a grant from the Legacy Foundation for the children's play equipment. This grant covers it, so we want to reprogram that. So our recommendation, and what we put in motion is to transfer the playground equipment from the Legacy Foundation to replace the children's play equipment at Jack Smith Park. The only, only other place in town where we have children's play. And it will also be covered. The second thing we want to do with the money is to put automatic irrigation system in that park at Jack Smith. We have, we have it up at Duke Watkins, but down at Jack Smith, it's the old manual sprinkler. And we can cut our watering time and our water use significantly.
Right.
By automating. The last thing we want to do is to, we already have funding for nearly all of a six-foot wide walking path. Flat. Made from recycled tires. So that's a recycling brand. And this will give us the money to finish it, but also, we want to add exercise stations around the track. So as you're walking your mile or two miles or more, you'll be able to have an area where you can do pushups, where you can do pullups, where you pull.
You can do pullups.
If you hadn't pulled all of this up, you wouldn't be, you'd be tired too. But there's, it, it makes for a class A recreation facility, so getting kind of a two, here by reprogramming the money that we, that we have. So I strongly encourage you and welcome you to approve.
Twist my mind.
Speak of three point nine six four.
I move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
It's exciting.
Public opinion on it? Public opinion?
Is there any, anyone like to speak from the public? If not, we'll go ahead and entertain the motion.
Barbara Beard would like to say so.
Oh, I see you.
Maybe instead of getting a, for some reason, I was wondering if it would be possible to use the grass at Jack Smith Park before we actually start water. The grass, all that cards.
Great. Sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Fire away.
Do you want to come up?
We just need to get your name on.
Logan Knox, L G A N K N O X. With the addition of the splash pad, close to the park wouldn't be the best idea, as it does get pretty slippery or pretty dangerous skating in water or something in that sort. And then the idea of the pump track, it's more of a yes and no of starting on a hill. A pump track should be able to, you can continuously pump, learn how to use the board and get speed on said little hills. And that's where I was also explaining the use of a BMX track. It would be where you start on a hill, and then you're going through a series of the same thing in said, there in a sense, just maybe more, a little more dirt or more pavement and corners. And it would start at one point and then end at the other. So on a pump track, you're supposed to be able to go continuously in a circle each way. And just hoping to get a little more skater input. And also with this, there, it is pretty like excessive as a pump track. That, that length would just be you'd get tired probably about the first four hills, four little, five little pumps, you know.
We want them tired.
Right, right.
Fight on walls.
Right. And if you, in spot where the Route sixty-six, I'm guessing splash pad would be, is where I propose it to be. And maybe also going in a circle, but able to go in between the circles, so a circle inside a circle track, technically. And then this field, the existing ball field would be backed up to J Street and the, the basketball courts that are being renewed as well. So then that'll give this specific area for skating, it'll keep the pump track and what needs to be in the skating area in the skating area and the ballpark part, the ballpark, if that makes sense. And as well as where these, uh, these four along J Street is where would be the street section, hopefully. Because here, the shade, it'd give us a little bit more area. It's already in the park, and it's shade, the shade parts are kind of dangerous if you're riding near them, because if you go real fast or if you slip, you got a post in a sense that you're really going at. And sometimes the posts, like in, of some are either hard or they're really sharp. That's not the best to be around, if that makes sense. And then the, the part, um, so, right here would be the part of connected kind of catty corner with Dollar General. And that wouldn't, wouldn't call for more or even, like I said, minimal parking to be added. Just a little section, a little bit easier to get to the park, and it could house the shop and the print shop as well. And I think that's it. I really like the idea of the dog park being added bigger, just not so much where the splash part, the splash pad is of being close to the skate park, just potentially getting wet or ruining bearings, which are forty to fifty dollars nowadays. Got it? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve?
I'll second.
We have a motion by councilmember Campbell, a second by councilmember Longacre. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yay.
Yay.
Item fifteen and item sixteen have been pulled. Item seventeen is approved third amendment of the city manager's employment agreement with Rick Daniels.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself because of the bowl.
He wants to eat cookies. He'll eat all the peppermint bark.
All right.
Okay, John.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to give the staff report on this item?
Yeah, would you give the staff report on, please? Thank you, John.
Yes, item number seventeen in your packet, you'll find a very brief staff report, and this is a relatively short amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. The last amendment was the second amendment. This will be the third amendment. And so I'll just hone in on the, the key terms that are being modified from the existing agreement. So if you go down to A, Roman numeral one, under the term, the current term of the second amendment is set to end on June thirty, twenty twenty-two. And so this will extend that out to September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, an addition of, I believe, fifteen months. So that's one change. The second change is more just kind of a housekeeping change than anything else, and that's in section B, Article two. It provides that the city manager's salary shall be two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year through the end of the contract term, through the, through September sixteen, twenty twenty-three. And, and I had to note that. I, I had to make that notation really kind of as a cleanup or housekeeping item. There's no increase in the salary. The second amendment provided that the salary was two hundred and seventeen thousand, but then it went up according to the terms of that contract on July twenty twenty, July one, twenty twenty, by five thousand. And then it went up again this, this July one, twenty twenty-one by another five thousand, which raised the salary to two hundred and twenty-seven. That's his current salary. And so I had to just clarify that and note that, that that's going to remain, the salary's going to remain as it currently is through the end of the term on September sixteen, twenty twenty-three. So there's no increase in salary. That was more of a cleanup than anything else. And there was no increase in salary requested by the city manager. And then item C, the city, we, we added this language that the city manager agreed that if he desired to resign for some reason, he would provide the city council with at least a hundred and eighty days written notice. And then also confirming that in the event that the city manager resigned, he wouldn't be entitled to any. And then also confirming that in the event that the city manager resigned, he wouldn't be entitled to any kind of severance pay. And, uh, then item D, uh, the, the change there is that, uh, there's an additional twenty day, twenty calendar days per year that's, uh, provided as, uh, time off. And I think the thinking was you have an assistant city manager now and, um, give the assistant city manager more opportunity to sit first chair, uh, and, uh, the city manager more time to sort of ease into that transition by giving the, the assistant city manager more time in the first chair position. And those are the only changes.
Thank you, John.
And the city manager, the city managers in agreement with all of those changes.
Comments by the council? Any comments, comments by the public? See none? Joyce, you want to say anything?
Okay.
Can, can we add a clause? Your honor, can I speak?
I'm sorry.
If he resigns, could we put a clause in here that we get to use super glue or acrylic glue to keep him in the chair? Okay.
Thank you. With that, uh, I'll.
Your honor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the third amendment of the city manager employment agreement with Rick Daniels.
Thank you.
I will second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Longacre, second by Councilmember Campbell, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let him back in.
Yes.
Your attorney for report.
I have nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you. Probably wearing on a treadmill in there, don't you think that?
I only had carrots. See?
Okay, we're ready for the city manager's report.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, we've been through the park. Um, we, uh, let me, I've got just six things I want to report on. We have had a problem at one of the cannabis facilities with odors. We had them on a mitigation plan that they submitted. They, uh, the, the builder of the facility put in what's called an open loop air conditioning system. And that is, it's pulling in air and then it's expelling air.
Leaks everywhere.
I know, and, um, you, the proper air conditioning for a facility like this was closed. You know, much like on your air conditioning in your car, you push the little circle, recirculating that air. Uh, the problem is that it was, it was, it was built by somebody different. These people are, uh, at work on trying to get it cleaned up. Uh, we have them under an enforcement order and they, uh, provided a mitigation plan. And we take this very seriously because the requirement is that you had, you eliminate odors beyond the property. But we all know that there's been a problem and, but I'm, uh, under firm belief that, uh, they are working in earth. I sent you guys earlier a note that, uh, the county supervisors who are elected by district, uh, have to go through a redistricting every ten years based on the census. Uh, we will be getting a new supervisor assigned to this area rather than, uh, Colonel Paul Cook retired, being our supervisor. We will instead be represented by, uh, a supervisor named Dawn Rao. Dawn is, uh, uh, from Yucca Valley. So hopefully we'll be able to, uh, establish a good rapport with her. I had a chance to meet with the presiding judge of Superior Court, uh, a week ago last Friday. Um, I, after hearing all the wonderful things that they're doing, I respectfully informed them that it was unacceptable. That rather than a court, a telecourt, where you talk to the PD one day a month, that the people in needles are entitled to better service.
Right.
Because what we're seeing happen, and all you have to do is look at the police reports, that someone will doesn't have, doesn't have the wherewithal to get to court in Barstow, Victorville, somewhere else. So therefore they don't show up and there's a warrant issued for non-appearance. So now the original crime plus the warrant, so now they're, they're starting to compound their problems. Another concern is that the sheriff's office has to do long trips to deliver, um, folks to be incarcerated at the jail.
Or to appear in court.
Or to appear in court. So, uh, that's a problem as well, our code enforcement. We, if we have something that has a dog violation, animal violation, it takes three hours to get to the court, an hour maybe in front of the judge and a three-hour trip back. That takes people out of our system and neither the sheriffs nor us have surplus people. So, uh, we, he, he understood what I was saying. He since sent me a note respecting our communicating the concerns. But also the, uh, superintendent was there because she has truancy issues that she gives. So they experienced some of the same thing. So I thought it was very good. I tried to be respectful and a professional. Um, I had a chance to meet with Darren Hill, who is owner of the Laughlin Market. And, um, he visited with me to assure himself that he wouldn't get caught in the California permitting license. I informed him that we've already issued in the only permit people need for that most essential. And that our building essential has established a rapport with the county environmental health department. So all of the food handling for, uh, the butcher shop, the, uh, deli, the, uh, vegetables, uh, that we will help him fill out the permit applications. Also Jeff is going to assure that he communicates with Supervisor Rao to make sure that she understands, uh, how important this is to us and the need to get a grocery store in here so we're not a food desert. So I felt very good about that. I had the chance for, uh, Counselor Merritt and for no, uh, Counselor Longacre, Counselor Bell and Counselor Campbell to meet with him just by chance. And, uh, not only that, he got a standing ovation as he walked through City Hall, particularly from the finance. So she's the, the finance department. So, uh, he has still experienced, I think he came away understanding, uh, better and, uh, how easy we're going to make it. But he also understood how important it is to this community, uh, to be able to have a grocery store and how much his efforts are appreciated. I have, uh, run out of patience with trucks. Trucks are a critical link in delivery of goods and materials to folks from the ports inland and amongst places. But they have created a very serious traffic safety problem.
They're wrecking, I say.
On, on South ninety-five in particular, that, uh, we've had people that have had to dive into the ditch, uh, drive their car into a ditch in order to avoid, because the, the vision clearance isn't efficient. Uh, we've had driveways blocked and, uh, accessed by our utilities and others to get into areas where they need to get, uh, by not abiding by. We've issued two hundred and fifty-six truck parking tickets this year. So more than one a day.
It's doubled.
Or almost. So I met with, uh, Sergeant Murch with our code enforcement. Uh, I've since had a follow-up meeting with Jeff Buck, who's the maintenance manager for Caltrans and Jesse Fergoso. And we are going to block Ice Plant Road because we tried to provide a turnaround and they just, they got, he got knocked over repeatedly. So it was fruitless. We are tired of picking up gallon jugs, milk jugs full of urine and other extreme. Uh, there is a terrible litter problem that gets created. So between traffic and litter and unhealthy, uh, materials, uh, we are going to block that off. Uh, I in- inform Atlas Properties, it owns the shopping center. Uh, first of all, Darren Hill was excited about it because he goes, uh, I noticed that it creates a problem for my customers to blend it out. He goes, bro. On ninety-five, oh, excuse me, we're going to build a serpentine of K-rail at the end of Ice Plant where the folks working down at Divine's Cannabis Cultivation will drive through a simple maze to be able to get through. And Sergeant, uh, Murch, uh, I want to thank him because he brought my attention to the need to make sure that we can get a fire truck through there and that we can get an ambulance through there. So in the next couple, three weeks, I also told, uh, Atlas and we had, uh, an agreement after this last summer where, uh, the community members, including Counselor Longacre, picked up thirty-five bags of trash. Uh, the Indian food restaurant. Indian food restaurant assured us and, and he got a dumpster out there, but it's not being used. He assured us that all the litter would be picked up on at least a weekly basis and it's not happening. And we have sold that property beyond the pavement. And it, it's time to encourage the Indian food restaurant to visit the west end of town where there's a vacant restaurant. And trucks and parking for more trucks is a much better site. We're also putting up weight limits on the streets across from where Ice Plant comes in. We don't want to just transfer that problem to, uh, Monterey and that neighborhood. So this will take a while. We're going to put up K-rails on an angled basis so they can't park off the road, uh, there alongside the cemetery and the fire station. Uh, and phase two is going to be, we're going to be looking at establishing a truck route through town because we have too many trucks, uh, going on to Rose Lake, San Clemente, which is not, was never built to handle, uh, forty thousand pound load of eighteen week. But I'll come back to you. A little bit on the cannabis signs that was brought up earlier, uh, state law, not city ordinances, but state law prohibits at events that are aimed at children like the Trump retreat, like the rec center remodel, like.
Seventy-one percent, correct?
Yeah, above seventy percent that are the target for kids, no advertising, no. Now, Ms. Cheryl, who spoke earlier, she provided upwards of ten thousand dollars for the glass backboards when we remodeled the, the right center gym. And so there is a sign in that gym thanking Cheryl Luette individually for the contribution she made for the detriment of recreation activities for our kids. Uh, it, it's, it's, it's not us, uh, but I fully support what they're doing. And everybody has complied with it. Um, one of the things that, uh, Mister Johnson, uh, didn't mention, but, uh, Counselor Belt worked on was there are two monument signs. So they're about twenty to thirty feet wide. They are river rock embedded in concrete with a welcome to California on them and one's going a five mile, the other's going at, uh, at Park Lane as it comes off. And then it says needles on the Colorado River.
Thank you for calling it Park Lane.
Right, so it is, it is what we hope to put on, uh, the, uh, the overpasses, but the best part is Caltrans can pay for it and it's part of their overall beautification. Uh, and then the last thing, you know, I want to acknowledge, uh, the birth of Emma Martinez.
Our baby.
And she is, uh, she's a banner hospital and eating weight. And, uh, we couldn't be happier that Patrick's life is going to completely change.
Sorry.
That's, that's all I ask for.
He'll be fine.
I'll, uh, if you wanted to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Uh, thank you, your honor. Um, first of all, uh, I want to, um, thank everyone, uh, city employees. I want to thank the city council. Uh, we had a really great, um, party, uh, acknowledgement party for city employees. Um, I put it on my Facebook. I wanted to take, thank Jan and Judy and, uh, their group, uh, for getting everything set up. Everything was perfectly set up just the way we needed it. And the Friends of El Garsis, that your tourism group, the museum, whoever was involved with setting that up, it was perfect. And it was easy to get in, to decorate, to set up. The, the food, the food was fabulous. The decorations were fun and everyone had a really, really great time. And I heard that Tana had a wonderful time with, using her PhD in shopping. So, um, so that, that was wonderful. So that, that was really, uh, a very cool event. And leading up to that, I want to thank, I just made a phone call to Rainey, who got in touch with someone from the city who does the lights. And all of the lights were put in at, down at Santa Fe Park. All of the light bulbs have been replaced. I think there were twelve of them that were out and they were all fixed Friday morning. So Friday night for the party, all of the lights were, were lit up in the park and around that street. And they went ahead and, and hit, um, hit, uh, Broadway and got all those lights done. So, uh, that was really wonderful that it, it just happened to coincide with Friday. It was just a lucky, a lucky phone call. That, that was it. Um, there's, um, I would, um, I agree with the truck problem, but I think we need to start looking at some solutions also other than just looking at moving that restaurant, which would be a great solution, uh, cause there's, yeah. We need a truck stop. We definitely need a truck stop. I mean, it is hard, but you know, we are out in the middle of the interstate. And I mean, we get a lot of truck traffic here and trucks are, you know, at some point, you know, stopping, they have to sleep.
They just built a new one between, uh, Lake Havasu and Kingman, uh, or the training grounds are, that place has been desolate for decades. It just built up brand new and it's open.
Yeah, well, we had an opportunity years ago and I don't know why the city council shot it down, but I remember being a part of that one when we were going to get that five, five mile road back then, but it doesn't matter. Uh, there's an opportunity, uh, and there's an opportunity to do something in conjunction with the tribe. They want a casino, we want a truck stop, they can get the gas, they can be in California. I don't know how that works, but we're, people are looking into it. So there are some thoughts about the future in the truck stop. The other thing is talking about our new supervisor Rao. Uh, there was, there was an ordinance that was passed for our county that's called light trespass ordinance. In case you've never heard of that, do you remember a long time ago when Bullhead City and Laughlin didn't have all those lights on top of the casinos? And you can actually go up there and see the stars? You can't because it looks like Vegas and you can see Laughlin coming into town. I, I want to ask, uh, what is it that we need to do? Even though it is a county ordinance that's going to take two years to put into effect that as we allow new growth, buildings, hotels, uh, and other things, that we do not allow night pollution and light pollution where we have lights going up into the sky and taking up our lights and that we don't get to see our skyline, that we can't see our stars because we have allowed lights to go up. So I don't know what that looks like or how that happens, but I would like us to look into that. So we do not allow any kind of spotlights up into the sky on a building. Um, because in, when you go up to Laughlin, you can't see the sky. It's really sad and you used to be able to when I first moved here. So, um, I don't want to see that happen with us. I think that's, um, that's, and what the. that's end what the period, I, oh, I see, we, we have told you, we attended ICSC. Oh my gosh. Someone told me it was like speed dating. It was, uh, uh, but I, I haven't dated since I was sixteen, so I never speed dated. I didn't know what that meant, but I seen it on television. We had ten meetings on Monday and I think we had five scheduled for Tuesday and I think we wound up having seven. We had some people drop, drop in on us. We met people, these people flying on their own jets. Um, but we met a lot of different people, uh, businesses and commerce and opportunities and talked about, you know, what Needles has to offer. We're on the freeway where businesses come. Um, we found out some things about, you know, why some things are not moving away as quickly with the inability to get shelving and lumber and things that are, are hard to get, um, and that has delayed some projects that are moving forward in our town. Um, so we met some people that are involved in that. That was pretty interesting. But it was nice. And then we had a young man just drop in on us at the end and wanted to know how we felt about modular homes. Did we, were we okay with that, having modular, you know, pre, you know, my, for prefab homes? I said, my daughter lives in a gorgeous one. And so he took information, he took the mapping from Needles and he drove down here from Las Vegas um, on his way from ICSC, he came to Needles, uh, and he checked it all out and I don't know where that's going to go, but it was pretty exciting and there were very few people there, I understand, as from normal. I mean, I know Patrick's been there before, Sean's been there before and usually this is a, like a pumping. So many people are there, um, and it was very, um, and they told me, uh, because of COVID and it was the beginning of Hanukkah, that there was just a lot of people that were not there. But that was nice for me getting my feet wet because this was like fast paced, really fast moving. You went from one meeting, it's like, okay, your time is up. We have to take you to the next table. And, um, so it was fascinating. So if you've never been to ICSC and you have the chance, it's kind of scary, but I think it'll be easier next time. And, um, it, it was nice and we were able to represent different things like our Economic Development Fund. You know, the things that you, why you'd want to be here, what Needles is like, what we have to offer, the freeway, the visibility, the tourism, the amount of traffic, you know, the hope for future going back into bus tours and different things that are being worked on already. And, you know, how this will all pull together for their business, um, and with people that we spoke with, and it was pretty fascinating. So, and I forgot, I got some goodies for your kids and I'll get them to you. So, um, I had a good time. I don't know if Rick wants to add anything. I, I'm so glad Rick went. Patrick couldn't go because he had a baby. So, um, so I'm glad I didn't have to go alone. That would have been very frightening. It was very good. And, uh, and wear comfortable shoes. Holy God. I hope I lost some weight. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Chris?
Um, I also wanted to say, uh, we had a great time at the employee party. Uh, it was really great to get out there and honor our, our employees and, um, just all they've done for us this year. And, uh, Tana and Ellen did a great job emceeing the event. And Sala out there was the best little hostess when everybody walked in. So I thought she did an amazing job. She even helped put away stuff.
Runner, she gives.
Everything. So, but anyways, so I just wanted to say that and then Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Tom?
Um, again, I also thank you guys for every helping get that, uh, event on and all the employees for showing up. Um, it's really is my pleasure and honor to do it, to thank you guys for everything you do for us all year long. Really is nothing in comparison. Um, on that note, I did spend a couple hundred dollars more than my budget, so. For, I'm asking, begging for forgiveness now and don't take food from my kid's mouth. No, I'm just kidding. Um, the second thing also is where are we on the, um, grass? Grassy knoll?
First one.
I was.
And I, I mean, Rick brought up a good point and now I'm not going to be able to let it down is a little stage area that other places have where, I mean, even if we can get a few people together, already nominated my husband for volunteer work. Um, but to build a little stage area that people can come do little plays, live bands, things of that sort, sit with their, if we get the, if we provide the area, this little stage area that we can, people can come sit on their chairs, blankets, that kind of thing. Just adding now that we're going to have the funding for these other two parks that maybe just we can get together as a a few people to help get a little something added into there before we put that up. I gotta get my notes because I can't remember. Sorry.
I left mine at home and rewrote them once.
I know, you're good. You're about better than I am. And then sorry. I guess that's, I guess that's it for now. And happy, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Oh, man, did I reset.
Councilmember Longacre?
I have a couple things, your honor. Uh, I hope we're getting close to fixing that traffic control issue on River Road and K Street area. That little block is still just horrendous. Uh, I want to keep up on the signage's, uh, skeleton signs, keep coenforcement pushing on that. Uh, I had some residents in Gate subdivision asked for borough signs, so can we add those to our sign list? Um, also in, end of March or beginning of April, before, uh, the last dispensary opened, they removed a twenty-five mile an hour curve sign heading towards Circle K. I asked it to be put up in March. It's still not up. Um, number four, um, since we have the new grant and, uh, we've already set money aside and okayed the skate park, um, let's find a company to buff out all those patches of covered up graffiti. Let's get it all one color, color and, uh, my artist is ready to come in and paint the boxes. So anytime y'all want me to do that, give me the thumbs up and I'll, I'll go do one of them. Let y'all see it. What's that? No, I'm talking about the stunt boxes, the grind boxes, a- accenting art inside the skate park. Um, I'll also call Marilyn Matthews and get the trees, uh, donated that she said she was going to donate. Okay, Santa Fe Park, there's a stump in there. Can we pull it out? It's huge. Doesn't need to be in the park. Um, and on that note, there's some dead fall trees and stumps in the golf course on a couple properties on town. We've got some dead palm trees that are bent in half hanging on a few properties downtown. Um, I don't know when that becomes a danger, but Christmas lights, I would like added to the light poles next Christmas in Santa Fe Park. There are eight poles. That's eight string of lights. That's forty bucks. Um, I love that we have our light poles down Broadway, but I'm just trying to add more attractiveness for the holidays. Um, and since we're down there, uh, I'd like to act, add electrical sockets to all graces and supply proper electric for events when people are doing events in that building. They shouldn't be running extension cords into anywhere to do anything, especially if they're running us or having a wedding or a party. We're running extension cords? Come on, that's two hundred bucks, couple sockets, electric and spend a couple hours. That's all I got. Happy holidays, folks.
Thank, thank you. And, um, I'd just like to, uh, thank everyone who's come here tonight and stayed till the end, uh, looking at the agenda, I thought we'd have a pretty brief meeting tonight and actually gone for a while. And, uh, it's interesting to see when someone's subject is taken care of, then that group goes and let's see all of you who stayed on to the end to hear the final word. And I guess, uh, part of that is, I mean, I was in the hospital again. Keep him in your prayers. And, uh, we shall, I'd like to, uh, congratulate our new father down in Phoenix, uh, still, I guess. And, uh, with that, I'm going to say Merry Christmas to all and we'll see you next year. Thank you. Oh, one more thing.